All right, I call to order this meeting of the Salem City Council for Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. We have a work session on sheltering and homelessness in Salem. If the recorder will please call the roll.
Counselor Stapleton here. Counselor Nishioke here. Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Gwynn here. Counselor Gonzalez.
Here.
Counselor Hoy. Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Varney here. Mayor Hoy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to have our staff and guests introduce themselves also. Jimmy, if you could pull your name tag over in front of you, not the one on the desk. Perfect, so the camera can see it. And if we'll just go down the line, starting with Gretchen Bennett, since you're all going to be speaking prominently tonight, I just would like to do introductions right off the bat.
Thank you, Mayor Gretchen Bennett, homelessness liaison, city of Salem.
Scott Archer, deputy city manager for community services.
I'm Nicole Yutz, I'm the housing administrator for Salem Housing Authority.
DJ Vincent, pastor and CEO of Church at the Park.
Stephen Goins, I'm the chief operations officer at Northwest Human Services.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Jones, I'm the executive director at Community Action here in Salem.
Thank you all for being here for this important conversation, we appreciate it. If you'll all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Counselor Stapleton, approval of the special meeting agenda, please?
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stapleton, second by Nishioke. Anything to add to that?
Nope.
All right, well, the recorder, please call the roll.
Aye.
Microphone, please.
Counselor Stapleton.
Aye.
Counselor Nishioke.
Aye.
Counselor Phillips. Counselor Gwynn.
Aye. And Counselor Phillips is raising his hand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, I clicked away. Aye, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Counselor Gwynn, Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy. Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Varney.
Aye.
Mayor Hoy.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And Counselor, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not tonight.
All right. So we are on to discussion item 2A, sheltering and homeless in Salem partnerships in progress. Am I turning it over to the city manager to begin, or just directly to Gretchen? All right, Gretchen Bennett.
Hi, thank you very much. Again, Gretchen Bennett, homelessness liaison. During your November 20th work session, you requested information. You'd really like to have an update, a current understanding, you said, of who's experiencing homelessness, key causes, what we're doing together to address issues, and what we're learning. And so, these requests also build upon your request for your information in a more in-depth study of homelessness and the work that the city has been doing the past few years. And so, we're bringing that information update to you tonight. The study specifically was commissioned in August of '23, and we have a final draft to present to you tonight. So tonight's plan, I'll begin with brief information about who's here and what we know about key causes. Next, we're going to have brief remarks from a series of partners. We have the Community Action Agency, Church at the Park, Northwest Human Services, and Housing Authority. I had also invited, of course, our Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance Executive Director, who's unable to join us this evening. We're all going to keep to five minutes or less, right, team? Because we want to leave plenty of time for your discussion and questions. And then, by 7:00, if we haven't gotten there yet, we're going to invite Tammy and Annie from Moss Adams to come sit here and walk through with you the performance document, the homelessness study. So, I've got to say, I'm enjoying being here at this point. Although I've been with the city much longer, I was assigned homelessness in March of 2020, and we've been reflecting on the policy changes, the approaches, the expansion. So it's just really been interesting to be at this moment here tonight. So I'm appreciating the chance to take stock with you all.
Thank you, Gretchen. It's really remarkable when you think just three short years ago, or four years ago now, you had that assignment, and just it was not too long ago where we weren't really doing anything with homelessness. It's all just happened in the last few years.
Copy. So here we are. So, I'm going to begin with remarks on who is experiencing homelessness in our community. Again, and we'll move quickly through this information. I want you to be aware, we've got a few sources. The Homeless Management Information System is a shared database that captures assessment and client services data. For example, last year, in the full Marion and Polk region, 4,000 people completed assessments indicating some need. We know that people are mobile, and what those assessments don't tell us yet is exactly what city they're from. That's one of the questions that you were interested in, is where exactly are people hailing from? It gives us a sense of maybe which county they're currently experiencing homelessness in, but not the city of origin. Our Point in Time Count is another popular data source. And back in 2023, volunteers identified 698 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness and 691 experiencing sheltered homelessness. And for those of you who may not remember, the Point in Time Count, or known as the PIT Count, is a census, if you will, where volunteers and individuals go out and try to count people experiencing homelessness at a specific period of time in January. The sources are generally agreed upon to underrepresent the situation, so we need to be conscious of that. There's further data in a document called the GAPS analysis, prepared by the Homeless Alliance, which I have hyperlinked in your report, and for folks viewing online, is also available at the Homeless Alliance website. It's a GAPS report that goes into detail on the demographics and the data that we're aware of, and was completed last in November of '23, so it's a good resource as well. It tells you things such as, of the adults assessed in '22, 45% in our region were fleeing domestic violence at the time of their assessment. Or we understand 70% of people reporting experiencing homelessness in Marion Polk County has reported experiencing that as a youth or young adult, so that's important. Causes of homelessness are varied, and I'd want you to hear include, but not limited to, housing affordability, the permanent supportive housing strategy affordability, unsafe home environments for youth or young adults, availability of options for people who are medically fragile or who are in need of care attendance and have a history of being unsheltered, a person's past trauma, historic oppression, struggles in coping with one's own disabilities, behavioral, mental health challenges, people who simply aren't eligible for federal housing assistance and don't earn enough independently to qualify based on certain past criminal records, and domestic violence. All of those are contributing causes that I hear about and get to talk with people regularly, daily, who describe these barriers or situations. It's been a wonderful experience jumping into this work, going back to when I first just started, because we've got nine city departments or divisions collaborating together. It really, many of us at the city are working on this issue in different ways. Our cleaning part of our SOS team is just over a year old now, and pulls about an average of 23 tons a month of trash, for example, from public areas. And I can't be more grateful for the very positive impact. The homeless services team, as a part of the Salem Police Department, has made very positive impact in very specific areas and parts of town. They work so hard to develop rapport and relationships with people experiencing homelessness and with many of our community partners, and they bring safety and trust into those conversations and assist so many. And those folks are coming up, I think, on their second anniversary, June 1st, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So as you know, we have more than that team, those teams can possibly do. They work really hard to try to just do the best they can in triage every day, but I couldn't be more grateful for them. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Jimmy Jones at the Community Action Agency to share remarks.
Thank you, Gretchen. Gretchen briefed me on the way in, sort of hit the high points, talk about what's working, discuss a few gaps. So let me just kind of briefly trace our situation here in Oregon, which is still sort of reaching its peak. The apex of this homeless population problem in the state has not been reached yet. Between 2020 and 2022, in the state, we saw a 22.5% increase in homelessness. That was at the same period of time when nationally we had a 0.3% increase in homelessness. So Oregon in particular is really suffering under these considerable increases. And then last year, in 2023, we had an additional 12% increase statewide. So we're still laboring under conditions that are likely to continue to generate a larger and larger population for the next five years. Among subpopulations in particular, we've got some concerns there. Youth homelessness in the state grew about 12% last year. Family homelessness grew about 16% in the state last year. And Oregon now has the single worst rate, the single worst rate, of unsheltered family homelessness in the United States. And that's really heartbreaking when you think about it. There's a lot of great work that's being done. I'll talk a little bit about my agency. Five years ago, we had no shelter beds at all. We sit here tonight with pushing 300. And we've brought a lot online in the last few years, including the Arches Inn, with support by the City of Salem, that's 75 rooms. We can get a few more people in there than that sometimes. The Arches Lodge came online this year, that's another 75 rooms. The City of Salem Navigation Center, which we operate, is another 75 beds. And if you look at the handout we provided tonight through 2023, we already housed 37 people out of that location, which is an extraordinary number. And if you were to ask me tonight, we're well up over 60, pushing 70 folks who have exited that facility into permanent housing. What's driving all of this is the affordable housing crisis in Oregon. It's very difficult, very expensive to build here, and so we are decades behind in adequate affordable housing stock. And as a result of that, what families are experiencing here in Salem and across the state is just an extraordinary rent burden. Rental costs are way, way too high, and no one can really afford them. So the state has moved $1.1 billion, and I'll hover on that number for just a moment, $1.1 billion in prevention assistance, rental assistance, to thousands of families across the state since the summer of 2020. Our agency alone has provided more than $40 million to 6,000 Marion Polk households in that period of time. So if you think about, you know, how many of those folks might have become homeless, and how much worse our problem would have been, you can see those sorts of extraordinary financial investments have made a little bit of difference. We've also opened a couple of youth shelters, one at the moment, very close to opening the second one. Taylor's House, which is a runaway and homeless youth shelter here in Salem, serves 11- to 17-year-olds. You might not think that there are a whole lot of 11- to 17-year-olds that are homeless, but we've seen more of that in the last 20 years. We're opening a new RHY facility, another youth shelter out in Monmouth next month, and that'll serve 16- to 19-year-olds. We're really appreciative of that opportunity. And so, one of the things I think the shelter mission that all of us at this table are participating in in some way, shape, or form, has really contributed to, is just creating a sense of normalization, creating a sense of safety, creating a sense of encouragement for folks who have been outside for five to 10 years in some cases. And it's very difficult for them to trust government, very difficult for them to trust agencies, very difficult for them to trust providers. So they've been hesitant, even if, you know, the barriers that we always talk about were able to be addressed, they've been hesitant to come in. But once you get folks inside in these sheltering environments, you get folks used to sleeping regular hours, eating regular meals, you know, and those sorts of things, it provides a phenomenal benefit of getting people connected into long-term housing placements. The problem, of course, is that it's very, very expensive, sheltering. If you'd asked me seven years ago, I would have said, "Don't waste your money on it. Spend all your money on housing." But the problem is, our homeless population got so large that to have done so would have been to ignored the tremendous human dignity concerns that we face on a daily basis. So we have to divide the resources we have, use our sheltering placements in the smartest way that we can, so that we can house hundreds, and then eventually thousands, of people across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, DJ Vincent, Church at the Park.
I'm going to use technology to show people some pictures and some data points. I'm going to set a five-minute timer for myself. It's an honor to be sharing with folks tonight, and the reality of how we get to lock arms every day to minimize human suffering and really usher some people into incredible thriving. So the first reality is, Church at the Park only does this work in partnership with the City of Salem, with the Homeless Alliance, with every other partner in the city. So any outcomes we have are shared outcomes. We coordinate on outreach, we coordinate on the entry of our folks, and we coordinate on every exit that happens. We have had the honor of doing emergency sheltering the past two and a half years, and we're excited about the results. So last year, through the things this council supported, we were able to shelter 500 folks. 200 of those are now not sheltered and stabilized, 109 of those to permanent housing. So I don't want to forget the innovative response around safe parking, and the fact that we've been cultivating that network of churches and just getting better and better at supporting people to positive destinations. We saw some incredible results this last year that we hadn't seen the previous two years, as we assigned pretty rigorous case management for those folks, and we saw 22 people move to permanent destinations and 55 onto other transitional spots. So we are hoping the city will see fit to continue to find a way to support that program. So then, micro sheltering, which was a pilot project. And we are still rigorously looking at what are the actual outcomes of bringing people into a safe space where they have their own locked door, and we begin to work on capacity building around sanitation, and we create a supportive environment for healthcare, housing, and jobs. The Village of Hope Center Street serves adults, and adults like Donald, who had spent a lot of years on the street and was able to find stabilization of his healthcare, and both he and his brother are now permanently housed. We were able to serve just under 200 folks at that location. Again, 26 to permanent destinations. We might beat that in the first quarter of 2024 with the great work of Sequoia opening, and then we have another 89 to positive transitional spaces. So the Village of Hope was able to get some additional funding from OHCS, which was a big deal, because now they're on the list, being recommended as a vulnerable shelter to be funded in this short legislative session, which is what all of us are hoping for, for the Village of Hope. The family side, as Jimmy mentioned, family homelessness is blowing us away, the number of families seeking shelter with us, many of which represent a story like Junie, where, you know, we come alongside, we figure out a way to get documentation, employment, even work on immigration status, so that she and her family can have a full and thriving life here in our city of Salem. So 262 people just last year, families, every one of them having a dependent, were served there at that spot at CCS. Again, 134 children needed that safe and supportive environment. We see a lot of those folks move on to permanent destinations. So, great news that through the work of the Homeless Alliance and through the allocation of the state, CCS is in the midst of contracting and budgeting to move from city support to Homeless Alliance support, and that support would last through June of 2025 at this time. So that's great news for our community and all those families being transitioned out of homelessness. So at Turner Road, we're able to serve up to 38 young adults like Shane, who now found a job and is supporting his own housing. And folks like that oftentimes need educational intervention, job opportunities, and then to find new ways to stabilize. So we're honored to be doing that work with 18- to 24-year-olds, and that is all funded through the state and the Homeless Alliance. And then the last thing I'll say is, we are experiencing a high number of 55-plus, and all the numbers are ballooning for folks over 60 across the nation, and especially in our community. And we actually believe we need a shelter village to meet their needs. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, DJ. Stephen Goins, Northwest Human Services.
Thank you, Gretchen, mayor, and counselors. I'd like to talk a little bit about our organization. There was a handout that was distributed prior to this that covers a lot of the, some of the data over 2023 from the various services and programs that we offer across our organization. For those who don't know, Northwest Human Services is a nonprofit community health center, serving over 12,000 patients in this region. We provide medical, dental, mental health, psychiatry, and social services. We are also a healthcare for the homeless federal grant recipient, which we use to provide dedicated, flexible, and responsive services to our area's homeless population. Our health records indicate we're caring for 2,366 homeless individuals. This number represents those that are unsheltered, sheltered, doubled up, or couch surfing. So that's an important component to that. People ask, is there's really 2,000 on the streets? There may be, but in terms of who we serve and who we consider as those who lack a fixed and permanent address. Key strategies that we're employing, as Gretchen and my colleagues here have mentioned, the community partnerships are invaluable. We lock arms each and every day to do incredible work. We know that maintaining these partnerships and collaboration is key to moving people through systems. We participate in service provider and COC initiatives and committees, including coordinated entry. Our host program is an official access site for coordinated entry, and we are working to have an assister onsite at our HOPE program. We also know that different strategies are critical to breaking down access barriers to safely provide services and healthcare. Our HOPE and Host Day Centers provide basic need services, such as laundry, clothing, showers, a meal, and we also help with vital documents, transportation assistance, and a mailbox. Our street outreach team is a bit unique. We have a medical component to that. We send a registered nurse and a community health worker into the field each day. We do brief health assessments. We patch up wounds and do wound care. We often will help coordinate care in the field directly to whichever doorway best fits their specific needs. We're finding more and more, we're interacting with those and working oftentimes from the moment of contact to the remainder of the day with those that are extremely medically fragile, those that might be decompensating on the street, both mentally and physically, and they're taking a great deal of our efforts and time. We are offering onsite medical clinics twice a week through the HOPE Day Center with some talks of expansion. So the two days that we're providing now, each day is full. A lot of the things that we see range from anything from chronic health conditions and needing our support to get back on a medication, entry into medical assisted treatment, filling prescribed medications, but also things that often people are just, who are exposed to the elements face, burns, cuts, infections, and other such conditions. We have a medical bus run that three days a week goes to all the area sites and picks up individuals, all the other partners, excuse me, in shelters, and takes them to the West Salem Clinic, where we have a team of doctors awaiting them to see them. We provide age-specific services. I mentioned the host program, that serves 18- to 24-years-olds. We offer specialized and intensive programming in three phases, a drop-in resource center, a transitional living program that has 10 beds, and housing, two units with rooms to rent, so people, so these youth can form rental histories. We also have an onsite mental health counselor one day a week. Since adding that mental health counselor, we've been able to house twice as many youth than we have the years prior. So that really speaks to the value of, particularly this age group, really attending to the things, the traumas and the other conditions that often have led to them winding up on the street. Hospital and ED monitoring, this is something that we're expanding in right now, so you're actually getting a little sneak peek, I guess, into our work in this area. We've created a staff position specifically to track the movement of our homeless through our hospitals using a specialized software. The goal is to support discharge, connect to individuals onsite, connect with individuals onsite at the hospital, and initiate referrals to shelter recovery programs when appropriate, such as Community Action Shelter Plus program. Homeless prevention, we do quite a bit through emergency financial assistance annually. Our financial assistance program and others in the community keep hundreds of households in their homes and keep the utility on. For example, the City of Salem General Fund, received in years past, alone helped over 260 households annually avoid eviction and becoming homeless. More than ever, ongoing and sustainable funding and resources are needed for that work. I think Jimmy did a great job of speaking to the numbers of that need. Where are we getting the most results? Partnering with shelters and transitional housing programs helps us increase success in recovery, healing, and follow-through with treatment. Essentially, when we know where they are, we can attend to their conditions, and we can help improve health outcomes. Particularly those who are medically fragile or needing a high acuity of care, we can make routine follow-ups and make sure they have what they need to follow a prescribed care plan. This helps to reduce readmission to hospitals, decrease ED utilization, and more specifically, save limbs and lives. We believe that it's important to recognize that establishing safety and predictability through sheltering and transitional housing programs, we can help individuals regain a sense of self, recover cognitive abilities, namely executive brain functioning, which are often diminished or impaired by chronic stress and traumatization of homelessness. Thus, the saying, "Housing is homelessness," or, excuse me, "Housing is healthcare." Also, last I'll leave with this, is we also believe in, and that there is no one-size-fits-all approach. Everything that all of our organizations are doing are needed. And even then, there's a lot of individuals on our streets who require more attention and care than we can provide, that I would say a higher level of care. For some of those issues might involve our drug crisis, inpatient and psychiatric facilities that we lack, medical detox that's specially equipped to address the fentanyl crisis and the time and intention that's needed for those that are coming off of those substances. And then lastly, some of the other challenges is some workforce issues that we could probably hold a whole nother meeting to talk about with you all. So, thank you.
Stephen, thank you. Nicole Yutz, Salem Housing Authority.
Thank you. I'm Nicole Yutz, I'm the housing administrator for Salem Housing Authority. And I know I bring to you every month what the Housing Authority is attempting to accomplish, but I just wanted to reiterate that we provide this community with over $2.4 million in voucher assistance on a monthly basis, and that's a vast majority of the work that's done at the Housing Authority. However, we're not your typical Housing Authority, and we're very solution-based, solution-oriented, and we take the partnerships of everybody here at the table tonight, plus many other collaborative partners, to make what we do happen. Since 2017, where we first initiated the homeless rental assistance program and has morphed into what we have now, three permanent supportive housing complexes with almost 150 units of permanent supportive housing now, since 2017 alone, opening our first in the Beechey Creek Fire, and learning vastly from that project what we needed to do for each and every one after that. To today, opening up Sequoia Crossings and seeing such a client difference walking through the doors, and finally seeing the continuum care actually working in our community, and seeing the great relief that we, sigh of relief that we're seeing today. I can't tell you how, from when we started in '19 to where we are today, the difference in the acuity needs that is coming through, having the ability to have Arches Inn, have Village of Hope, all the different destinations prior to coming and being referred to our sites, has made a vast difference in our ability to serve the clients and continue their stability and healthcare needs while they're living onsite. Each one of these, we've learned vastly from, opening Redwood Crossings during a difficult time, market capacity issues, COVID-19 wildfires, and our ability to have a single-room occupancy with one shared bathroom and not being able to fully utilize it, to today, having 60 units of onsite permanent supportive housing has greatly changed the impact and seeing it firsthand every single day. I was just commenting with DJ Vincent about some of the Village of Hope occupants that have come to Sequoia Crossings, and how different of stabilization they are at the point of entering Sequoia Crossings by having that time and ability to be at the Village of Hope before entering into our apartments, has enabled us to actually think that we could move faster at moving clients into the building. These clients- the building. These clients come, they're ready, they're prepared, they know what it's going to be like coming into an apartment, even though we are seeing still the transitional struggles of what it was once this, they never could think that they would have an apartment as beautiful as that. And even a year ago, to the trauma they endured from years or months or their time out on the streets, to being able to take that in and be able to continue their path to recovery is, is just amazing. And I have to say that through the years, we couldn't do what we have done today without the partnership of everyone here at the table. Stephen has talked about his team. His team has been instrumental. We called upon his team many a times at Euquino Hall to come and help assist us with clients that were attempting to stabilize, making sure that their needs were being met as they were coming through the door. To Jimmy's team, who I see almost daily at one of our sites and collaborate with them ongoing, but through the whole process of the coordinated entry, we take many referrals, probably up to 50 to 60 of coordinated entry referrals off the list on an any-month basis to any of the different programs that we serve. And we couldn't do it without the collaboration and partnership. I will say that every client, what you, what Gretchen Bennett indicated about victims of domestic violence, some of those individuals that we see coming through the door had one emergency that ended them up on the streets and into their life of homelessness prior to coming through, through several years of enduring that homeless situation before being able to restabilize. Many of them have couch-surfed with families. We have many families in our vouchering and different assistance programs that are, are still trying to uphold their voucher duties and responsibilities to their lease agreements, but feeling for the family members that are suffering because they are falling into homelessness, because they're unable to pay their rent utilities. We're seeing more and more families that are becoming homeless reaching out to our agency on a daily, hourly basis anymore, that they work two and three jobs and they're just not able to keep up with the rent. We're also the ones in the city that get to see the continued rent increases that we are just astounded by. The ones that came through the door this month was an $800 rent increase. I'm not sure how many families can afford an $800 rent increase, let alone our vouchering agency being able to continue to afford, to help as many as that we are helping out there today when we're, we're seeing these kind of vast increases in units. I'm not sure if you're aware, but any units that are 15 years or, or younger don't have a rent cap on them, and we're seeing them rise those rents to the max capacity at every single annual recertification. Our numbers continue to lessen and who we're able to serve on our vouchering side because of the, the amount of rent increases that we are facing. And...
Gretchen, could I interrupt for one second? Thank you for that overview. I think that was really helpful. I'm hoping that one of you, or maybe several of you, could just sort of walk us through, what did, I know that this will be difficult because there are probably no two people alike, but what is it, when a person is living on the street in Salem, how do they, how do they first come in contact with one of your agencies? And where might they go first? And then where might, can you talk about the progression, that continuum of care? And just kind of, from a, just a layperson's perspective, like, what does that look like? Like, what role does Stephen, does your agency place? And what role does a micro shelter play? And, and maybe Arches In or, and the Navigation Center? Could you just kind of walk us through that so we can really understand that at a deeper level?
I want to jump in primarily because I admired the folks up here on this panel. Why I was doing 10 years of volunteer outreach and have seen, you know, hundreds of people go through this process of our, our community coordinating its outreach better than ever. So, when someone has become unsheltered, it's not just that they ran out of money, but they ran out of relationships, and trauma has caused a break in many of those relationships. And so, trust needs to be rebuilt by being a safe person. So, outreach is being done at least five days a week by an army of folks in this community to rebuild trust with those folks who've experienced trauma. And then many of those folks are receiving lifesaving interventions down at Arches and by walking in to UGM to, to get a meal. And the, the reality is, some of those folks, maybe they aren't trusting the, the system to put themselves in a shelter, but then when they are, they may be able to connect with the Navigation Center, or a micro shelter, or the Union Gospel Mission. Once they're there, all of us are seeking to provide that physical, psychological, emotional safety and build their team with great partners like Northwest Human Services to reestablish their healthcare so that they can have a primary care provider as well as other providers. And then assessors in many of our agencies are assessing how ready they are for housing and what the best plan is to make those applications and what paperwork needs to take place. So, all of our agencies now have very trained and passionate case managers working to connect people to meaningful work and whatever housing opportunity is the best fit for them. And then, like Nicole shared, and like we're experiencing at the Village of Hope even this week, folks who desperately need permanent supports are finding that now in our community.
And why is it important to have that kind of intermediate step between living on the street and living in an apartment? What does, what role does that intermediate step play?
I can let someone else share.
Want to go ahead?
I'm just going to say, just from experience, from 2019 to now, Redwood Crossings was the hardest to house in Salem. And I think we've learned, Jimmy, you're welcome to jump in here as well, but that there are individuals that are not ready to be housed at that step or that level, and that they need some additional support and trust-building before we offer them an apartment complex, or we could be creating additional trauma on their end by potentially having another eviction on their record. Oftentimes, we, I like to talk about our success story with one that we really were hopeful for, was almost at a point where we were concerned about signing a lease agreement, came into the Redwood Crossings. She was not prepared to go into a, a living facility such as Redwood Crossings and slept outside for over 30 days. And everybody, every case manager, everybody did their best to encourage, try to build that trust. But that trust needs to be at a different level of support. And in, in the outcome of that, we worked for a positive destination besides Redwood, and that individual went to the Navigation Center and ended up thriving at the Navigation Center. And maybe we'll, we'll see that individual back into our apartments again one day, but that needed that additional step for that trust-building and that support and that time. Also, to help instill that value of personal possessions, when we, we have struggled with multiple apartments from coming from various camps to bringing that entire camp into an apartment. I was just giving DJ kudos because at Sequoia, we have not seen the train of carts. We've not seen the bicycle trains coming through, the buckets. In fact, we had one household that asked to use our hose to wash everything before they even took it into their apartment. They had already been worked with for several months on transitioning to what personal possessions are of value, what is needed to survive indoors as opposed to bringing everything from the outdoors inside, which then can also heavily damage an apartment, but also it creates a, a barrier for us in that trust-building because we immediately go into lease enforcement mode for potential hoarding situations. And it really just builds that extra level of trust. And I know, Jimmy, you were going to say something as well, but...
You said all of it. I would just sort of circle back to that whole concept of trauma. And we throw that term around a lot without actually pausing to think about what it means. But what it basically means is that people are in incredible personal deep pain. And when you find yourself in a situation where you can trust no one, and maybe that situation goes on for many, many years, it is incredibly difficult to build trust, repair trust, and to establish relationships with people in those circumstances. They have been promised assistance in the past by agencies, by individuals, by government, by just about everybody that they can encounter in the system. They've been promised help before. "I'm here to help. I'm going to solve this problem." And 99 times in a row, sometimes that promise was broken. So, getting yourself to the point where you're willing to accept help again can be quite an extraordinary barrier to get over because your heart's been broken repeatedly over and over again. So, it, you know, a lot of times, that lack of trust is well-earned. And so, we have to do our work very well so that we can get people to a point where they can, they can believe what we're saying.
Thank you.
We were done when you jumped in, so that was perfect timing. So, just to clarify that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Counselor, Nick.
Thank you so much. One of the silos I hope that we can break down over the course of time is between the subject matter experts gathered here and the general public, who knows next to nothing about your work. And I know that can be hard because a lot of individuals in your shoes feel that you are constantly telling people what you do. It is never enough, and any counselor here will tell you that you can go to a neighborhood association meeting, you can go to that same neighborhood association meeting several times and still find individuals who need basic education in what we're already doing and the nature of your work. So, to that end, I want to request some comments and some clarification on the HMIS handout that we have. So, included in the materials, and this is all accessible online for folks watching on, online or at home, is HMIS data for the year 2023. And it says that there were 4,549 people who were assessed for housing need. So, I just want to stop there and make sure we have a common understanding. What does it mean to assess someone for housing need?
Thank you, Counselor. So, what that number means in the broader sense are folks who fit in one of the four federal categories of homelessness. So, I think when most people use that word and think about that concept, they are thinking about people living in a tent, living under a bridge, living along a river, living outside on the street. That certainly is inclusive in that 4,000-plus number, but it is not all of who is in that 4,000-plus number. So, that number would include folks who are housing unstable. It would include folks who are couched under certain circumstances if they were fleeing from domestic violence. So, that is the big number of people who are seeking assistance and who are eligible for it across those funding categories in the community.
Thank you. So, that does not mean that we have over 4,500 people on the streets right now?
That's correct.
And we have not conducted, when, I mean, can anyone here estimate what is a realistic number? And I know there's no precise number. How many people are on the streets in Salem?
I would say about 1,500. And when I would say that 1,500 number, I would include the people who are in shelters. So, if you remember 2019, the winter of 2019, 2020, we had an extraordinary crisis in the downtown with hundreds of people on the street camping outside of Rite Aid. It was a really, it was a, it was a human rights nightmare. But the city went to work, we went to work, and so what you see today are a few hundred that are currently outside, outside of a shelter situation. And I would say that probably number is around 800. And then again, if we, if we go to Kaiser, we're going to add in some more. If we go a little farther outside the city, we, we consider both counties. I've always used the big number of about 2,500 in both counties at one point in time. Pit counts are, are terrible measurements of, of this issue. A good pit count, a good pit count, which I've never really seen, probably can get 75% of what's really there.
Thank you. So, my next question, again, if folks are following along at home, if you look at the HMIS data of these 4,549 people, I was really struck by the number or the percentage of these individuals with health conditions. So, what a lot of folks from my end, they don't understand or are aware of just how predominant some sort of mental or medical health condition. For example, it says here, 45% have a mental health condition, 34% have a physical health condition, just 26% have no problematic health condition, 25% have a developmental disability. And this is a stat that will also surprise some people, 21% have an alcohol, drug, or both alcohol and drug use condition. And I want to just pause on that one too, because that's the other stereotype that I see all the time when I'm talking to people in the community. There is a assumption that everyone who is homeless is on drugs. And what I'm seeing here is that 21% are, have an alcohol, drug, or an alcohol and drug use condition. Can anyone speak a little bit more to that? Because I honestly, when people see that stat, I get a lot of crooked eyebrows and I get a lot of skepticism. So, what's the data to help support that?
So, just very quickly from a data perspective, and then I'll just sort of pass it on to Stephen because he's the expert on the health-related stuff. When you're talking about those statistics with regard to that big number, you're going to see a lot of subpopulations in that number who aren't sort of classically exhibiting drug and alcohol addiction. You're going to see a lot of folks who are couched. You're going to see a lot of folks fleeing from domestic violence and other prevention-type categories that will reduce that number down to 20%. Now, if we just exclude all those folks and focus on the people who are outside, it will go up, but it's not going to go up to 90%. It'll go up to somewhere between 50 and 60%. So, you know, it's, there's a massive amount of misconceptions and misunderstanding about the people who live in this condition.
Yeah. I mean, we know more than half of our unsheltered, and this is through HMIS data, are on Social Security. They have fixed incomes. They suffer from a disabling condition that renders them unable to, to work. And so, that's a very real statistic. It makes it incredibly challenging to assist these individuals from their state of homelessness and to move them, you know, off of the streets and transition and reintegrate, especially that fixed income component. In terms of the drug and alcohol use, I'm, a lot of people use that. It's human nature to characterize people as such. We are, that helps us remain willfully blind to situations. It's uncomfortable. And so, we may overgeneralize that to, to everybody in order to, in sort of to keep people at a distance. The problem with that is, is you can't, if you isolate a problem, it doesn't change. You have to engage with the situation and the problem. And so, those are, and I agree with you, Counselor, getting the information out to the communities is, is important of the challenges that we face, who exactly is out there and what their needs might be.
Counselor, could you turn your microphone on, please?
Sorry about that. My apologies. The only other thing, I was at a neighborhood association meeting, individual, when I mentioned the latest success story of Sequoia Crossings, I had an individual ask me if we're housing illegals in all of those housing projects. So, I'm wondering if we can provide a little more factual information response to that.
Thank you. With any federally assisted program, there are households that may not fully qualify. We have many households where maybe the parents do not qualify for assistance, but the children do. They're what we call prorated assistance. So, I can't tell you, I can tell you that at this point, we haven't had anybody on a prorated assistance at Sequoia Crossings. But we do run into that in various different properties, and they do have a right to federally assistance as long as they have one qualified member in their household. Oftentimes, what we find is their rent then is so high based on the prorated assistance that they do not accept the unit because they cannot afford it.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you. I was just curious to go back to the percentage. When you remove the couchless, it went from 20% to 50 to 60% on the street dealing with addiction. What does it increase in terms of mental illness?
So, what we, let me just back up a little bit. Thank you for that question, Counselor. What we see very frequently are a lot of co-occurring health conditions. So, the population generally is very, very sick. They are dying at a much more rapid rate than the rest of us in this room are dying. The average age of death for a homeless person in Salem is around 54 years of age if they're dying outside. So, the health conditions are very... years of age if they're dying outside. So the health conditions are very bad. The drug problem has gotten much worse the last five years, and everybody at this table will tell you that. The mental health concerns, I think, have remained more constant. They are certainly higher as we shrink that population down. I would say well over 50%. Some of those mental health conditions are essentially being generated by questions that we are asking on the VI SPADA. So some of those people may not have official diagnoses as a result of that. The folks that Stephen was working with, the folks who own social security, all of those folks have an official diagnosis. But the larger, broader, general population may not. So they might manifest things like a history of head trauma. They may have spent some time in a state hospital. They may have been diagnosed with certain conditions in the past and those sorts of things. So, you know, I think the broader part of your question is, what is the state sort of doing to, to address this issue? And we destroyed the mental health system in America in the 1960s. And we sort of expected that, for good, for good reasons in part, we sort of expected that the community mental health system to pick up all of those needs, but it was never adequately funded. So we have a lot of folks outside today that 30, 40 years ago, Stephen and I worked to try to get some of these folks assistance at times, 30, 40, 50 years ago would have been in some sort of managed care facilities. So it's not a, as he said earlier, there are folks outside whose need levels are so high that we do not have the resources to address. But I wouldn't say it's anything close to the, to a significant percentage.
I, this is a big problem. And I personally have dealt with folks where I've, I've thought to myself, I don't know which came first, you know, but maybe you were drawn to the addiction because of your mental illness, or, or maybe you're addicted now because you don't want to feel what you're dealing with out here. It's all, it's all heartbreak to me. My bigger question, or just as big a question, is is there anything that can be done about capping rent so that people can't be priced out of their homes?
So we do have a rent control law in Oregon. It only applies to complexes that are older than 15 years. We have an annual increase that's tied to a certain minimum percent plus the Consumer Price Index. So last year, coming into 2023, was the single most devastating year for those of us who are working with this problem because we had a 14.6% increase in the rents from 2022 to 2023. I need to check on what the, what the rental increases is this year, but it's, it's, it's just been a cascading geometric problem to the point that folks are getting priced out of their homes at a pace that I don't know that we're going to be able to keep up with.
And then I just want to comment that those newer, the loophole that a lot of people are not aware of, but the 15 years and newer do not have that rent cap. So we're seeing newer complexes come online with move-in specials that are attainable for individuals. And then that next year comes around where he's talking about that catastrophic spiral that we're seeing these huge rent increases that even out prices our rent reasonable ability to provide a voucher in.
I think many others might not, might not understand how that happens. Is that federal? Is that, where's that coming from?
It's a rent control law in the state. It essentially applies to the, to the state-owned properties that are older than 15 years of age.
Thank you.
It's a fairly recent law, just within the past, what, three years, two years? I can't remember exactly, but it's a, we had nothing prior to that. And this was kind of like the first step into a rent control law in Oregon. Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you so much. I had a quick question. We were talking earlier about the amount of permanent supportive housing beds, emergency shelter beds that have increased in the city of Salem since 2017, really. You, Kevin, spoke about, sorry, not Kevin, Stephen, you talked about hiring somebody to help with mental health, just one person, and it seemed to help so many people. That's what I picked up on. When we look at services for mental and behavioral health in the city and for drug treatment in the city, have those been also increasing since 2017? Are the, do we count those as beds? Do we count those as professionals helping? How do we track that? And how is it increasing over these past years?
Can you shorten your question a little bit? What is it specifically you're asking?
Sure. So I'm looking at what the city is doing to increase shelter beds and housing. But we know that's only half of the problem.
Yes.
Right? We also need the healthcare part of it. So my question is, are those beds or units or doctors increasing at the same rate that we are increasing or trying to increase our housing?
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, community health centers like ours, we're, we're tasked with serving all members of our community. And we grow and expand according to the need. And I can tell you, we would continue to grow and expand if possible because we certainly are not, or do not have the current amount of resources to meet the need. So we get creative. We do some of this, we're doing innovative work in terms of trying to get people into, to the clinics. But that is something we're continually looking at, is expanding our provider field.
What about for the behavioral health side, the, the drug and alcohol treatment and the mental health treatment? Where do you, do you see those resources increasing? Are they decreasing? Because I know it's not just, there are other agencies other than just Northwest Human Services.
I mean, across the board in the state. I mean, we're, we're last in, in meeting the need, resources to the need. We're 50th in, in the United States in providing mental health resources. So that's no different here locally. The challenge with, with providing mental health, behavioral health resources to our houses is that they need stable, predictable environments in order to begin that work. If operating from their survival brain doesn't necessarily afford them the opportunity to actually do the work to process and, and address their mental health issues, which is why in my opening remarks, I really mentioned that getting people into, into stable environments, transitional environments, really allows us the, the work to begin. It's, it's not conducive to a treatment plan living on the streets, or even often even in shelters, because you're navigating, again, all the shelter rules and everything that comes with that. But it's certainly helpful.
DJ, you didn't mention, I don't think, the services out on Turner Road, the wraparound services. Could you talk a little bit about that, and where that money came from and all of that, so people are aware that that exists?
Yeah. At Turner Road, we knew we wanted to provide that transitionary space for those young adults, and they were going to be coming to us because of trauma. And so onsite, we have a counselor, we have peer support specialists, we have, the caseworkers are trained community health workers, and then we have a chaplain onsite to coordinate other community resources that would come in. And we are at the bottom, but hopefully our CCO and Pacific Source see the, the need for training a lot more community health workers in our community. And the work has begun, seeing the gap, and the work has begun for us at Turner Road.
And that money came through the, the Homeless Alliance from HUD, right? That was a grant.
Yes, it did.
So I just want people to clear, to understand that there's a lot of money coming at this, not just from the city, but from other places as well. So, great, thank you. And I know we need to get transitioning over to Moss Adams, but we will have more time at the end for questions of these folks. But we want to get on to the second part of our program, if that's all right with everybody. Welcome.
Thank you for having us this evening. My name's Tammy Lor. I'm a senior manager with Moss Adams, and I was the project manager for the City of Salem's homelessness study. And I am joined today by my colleague, Annie Fadeley, who will be getting us started with our presentation this evening.
All right. Well, you got to hit that button so the green light comes on. There you go.
Good evening. Hello. Thank you for having us. So like Tammy said, I'm Annie Fadeley, and we are presenting the results of the homelessness study that we recently completed at Moss Adams.
And this, folks have this in their packet as well, right? So if they can't see it online, they, they can link to it from our agenda, and I think it's in your packets.
Great. I'm going to cover the project's scope and provide some service ecosystem context. And then Tammy is going to take you through key themes and results, and then we'll take questions at the end. So this evaluation was conducted in response to council's request to review the city's contracted services. And it's really intended to paint a clear picture of both the service landscape and the impact that city-funded programs are having in the community. A big part of that is summarizing and celebrating all of the great work that's going on in the city to respond to homelessness. And also a part is identifying some opportunities for improvement in the response that are within the city's purview. So ultimately, our hope is that these recommendations can really help inform future strategic planning efforts. And the scope was developed to cover the city's response to homelessness, so we only looked at response. We did not look at prevention. And it was intentionally focused on what the city has direct control over. So we looked at the three areas here. The first is planning and strategy, where we evaluated the relevant goals. We looked at what the documented strategies and documented performance measures are. We looked at ecosystem and resource utilization. So we, we identified gaps and barriers that exist in the service ecosystem, and we analyzed the resources that the city expends to respond to homelessness. And finally, at the bottom here, we documented the current related city contracts and compared contract management practices to some best practices in that area. There we go. So I think Grunton mentioned that we began this assessment last August, and this is just a brief overview of our methodology. So we've had the chance to meet with individuals and stakeholders across the service ecosystem. We've reviewed related documentation, and we've conducted research on industry best practices and industry standards related to homelessness interventions at the regional and municipal levels. And I'm going to provide some brief environmental context. There's much more information in the report, but going to keep it relatively short tonight. So starting with some regional homelessness trends, I know we've touched on this a bit already, but the chart on the left shows the point in time counts for people experiencing homelessness in the region between 2020 and 2023. And you can see, although there's a slight decline here between '22 and '23, unsheltered counts, so that TOPE bar on the right, were not collected during the pandemic, which makes patterns a little bit more difficult to tease out. But during this project, what we consistently heard from folks is that challenges related to homelessness in the city really feel increasingly visible. They feel more widespread in recent years. And that's really supported by the statewide trends over here on the right. So homelessness in Oregon, I think you've heard this already tonight, increased by 22.5% between 2020 and 2022. And that was the fourth highest increase in the nation. And the 2023 point in time count ranked Oregon with the third highest rate of homelessness in the country. Over half of that was unsheltered homelessness. And you can see that's reflected in this chart by the regional count, too. And that really reflects that feeling of a visible crisis. And this is just a brief overview of the response landscape. It shows that the response to homelessness is really multilayered. It comes from all levels of government. And the city is not responding to homelessness alone. So here on the outside rung, we have federal agencies. They generally provide funding and support national efforts to plan and coordinate responses. And then you have state agencies that typically provide funding and policy direction to local organizations. And then the county, city, and local levels come together in different ways to set, to set detailed regional strategy and to provide the majority of direct services. And so what does that look like here? This is just a list of the 25 organizations that all play a part in the service ecosystem in Salem. And this is really meant to demonstrate the complex environment in which the city and these partners operate. And these are the primary departments at the city who are involved in this work. And it's important to note that many of these departments are also involved in dedicated cross-departmental collaboration efforts as well. And finally, looking at the city's overall investment in the response to homelessness. So in FY '23, we identified a total of 23.7 million in homelessness response-related expenditures. And we classified these costs as either primary costs or secondary costs. So primary costs are those direct expenditures on homelessness services and programs. And then secondary costs are expenditures on general city services that can be attributed to the population of people that are experiencing homelessness. So to differentiate between those two, we reviewed expenditure and workload data, and we identified 13.4 million in primary costs and 10.4 million in secondary costs. And the other thing that we want to note is that 87% of those direct costs were funded through state and federal one-time pass-through funds, and the remaining 13% was funded through the general fund, which is something that Tammy is going to touch on as she reviews key themes, key themes and results.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll be going through some of the key themes and results. As you can tell in your packet, there's quite a bit of information in the report, so I'm going to review this at a fairly high level. And then we're happy to take questions from all of you today. So I'm going to review these five key themes. So we have planning and strategy, performance monitoring, the service ecosystem, which you've already heard quite a bit about this evening, contracting processes, and the city's financial role in responding to homelessness within the community. To start out with, we'll talk about the city's current planning and strategy environment. And right now, there are essentially three different sets of plans that end up influencing the city's response to homelessness within the community. Homelessness is one of your five strategic priority lists, strategic priority areas listed in your strategic plan. And that does include specific objectives around crisis response, homelessness prevention, and the expansion of affordable housing. The city also has an internal homelessness committee, which is a work group of interdisciplinary staff that meet on a regular basis and promote information sharing, coordination, and proactive planning. I will say that we have done this work in many other cities and have not seen that level of collaboration and coordination in the other areas where we have done this work, and that is a very strong work group. They also have a work plan that advances safe and welcoming places. It talks about engaging private property owners to be able to have that safe, welcoming space for all in multiple areas across the community, as well as promote communication with yourselves, with decision-makers, as well as those within the community. And again, we do have that interdisciplinary collaboration going on. In addition to that, the city is an active part of the Mid Blamette Valley Homeless Alliance, which I will shorten to the Homeless Alliance for this presentation. And that alliance is a relatively new regional continuum of care. They have a strategic plan that was developed a couple of years ago to help serve individuals and families experiencing homelessness within this region. And so there are three different sets of plans that the city has influencing its response to homelessness. However, as we were conducting our fieldwork for this project, we identified that there were sometimes additional questions that these plans hadn't yet answered. So some of those might be, what is the city's role in addressing homelessness? Or what is the role of law enforcement in addressing homelessness? And within these three different plans, we haven't yet answered some of those questions. And so we've got two recommendations here for the city. In the short term, we would recommend that the city develop a homelessness operating plan that aligns with the Homeless Alliance's strategic priorities to be able to advance those regional goals and continue to be an active part. Simultaneously, those will be helping to support your strategic priority areas within your strategic plan and really be able to just have the activities and the priority areas identified in an annual work plan. We would also recommend that the city develop a comprehensive homelessness strategic plan. This is a practice that we have seen be very effective for other cities. There is research on the effectiveness of this type of plan within the report. And so this would be a little bit more of an undertaking than developing an operating plan. It would really be able to show the alignment among key city stakeholders, including those who are also sitting at this table with us, and integrate with those regional efforts. The next area that I want to talk about is the city's financial role. So as Annie had mentioned previously, the city has funded almost all about 87% of its direct homelessness response through one-time pass-through dollars. As you are all very aware, these revenues are largely running out, with most anticipated to be spent by the end of this fiscal year or next fiscal year. Additionally, as we are all intimately familiar, the city is facing a revenue shortfall and is actively exploring ways to be able to help increase its revenues. However, with this shortfall in mind, the However, with this shortfall in mind, the city will need to develop a vision and a strategy for how it will be able to support any homelessness efforts, given its financial position and limited resources. The city has always been very upfront and honest about these restrictions with its service providers. We're so happy to hear that there are other funding sources that are going to be in place to help sustain these services. But going forward, the city will need to be able to think through the financial ramifications of its operating and strategic plans that we've just recommended. The city also doesn't currently have a mechanism in place to be able to aggregate all of its costs related to homelessness to understand what that impact is on the city every year. As Annie mentioned, we do differentiate between direct service costs and secondary costs. And those secondary costs are things like your park cleanups, your response for police and fire. And even if you do not spend the money on direct services, that dollar amount for your secondary services is likely to continue to evolve, given the demand for those services within your community. So that's one of the reasons that we recommend that cities develop a mechanism to be able to measure that over time. Aligned with all of this, we're going to talk about performance monitoring. So one of the questions that came up during our interviews with all of you, as well as other folks around the city, was, is what we're doing working? Is this working, and how do we know? What is success? So based on this feedback and our review of the performance measures that were available with the city and with the city's contracts, you have much more performance information available at your fingertips this evening. It is evident that the city does have data that it collects internally and from its service providers that it can report out on. We just need to be able to develop a list of performance measures that are consistent over time and really demonstrate the impact of each of these programs and services. So we have a recommendation that the city develop about four to six community-level, outcome-based performance measures to be able to help communicate the so what out to all of you as decision-makers, as well as out to your interested community members. As the city compiles this, we'd recommend that it try to align its performance measures with those that are currently used by the Homeless Alliance, because those are based on a lot of best practices. And again, it has a nice balance of demonstrating those outcomes. One of the other pieces is to be able to have a balance between outcomes and outputs in this space, because you don't want to just use one measure, like the point-in-time count. We've already heard about some of the limitations to that data. And you also aren't then reflecting some of the upstream potential reasons that that count might be increasing. So just thinking through that suite of that four to six measures and making sure that you're able to strike that balance to demonstrate what work is happening and what is the outcome of that work. We also have a section within our report that talks about data collection and governance. That really answers the question of, what data are we going to keep? How are we going to track it? How are we going to store it? How are we going to report out on it? Making sure that that information is of high quality and really reflective of practices within the city. And there are a couple of options that we outlined for this, each that have their pros and cons. So you could centralize your tracking of this information within your GIS system. That's pretty robust. It's already used by your homeless services team within the police department. And you could use that for data tracking and management. But many of the service providers that are here with us tonight would not be able to access that information or that service. The other option is to be able to have the city potentially get read-only access to the homeless management information system, where it could extract reports out of that system. However, you may not be able to limit the information within that system to only the city of Salem. And typically, we don't see continuums of care, like the Homeless Alliance, provide access to that system to law enforcement partners. And so you would also need to think through the additional services or additional providers that may need to accompany your homeless services team in order to make sure that that information could be consistently tracked. So overall, we're recommending that the city develop a dashboard of performance measures that it can report out on consistently, those same measures to be able to track progress over time. And that could ideally be a public-facing dashboard, so that everyone in the community has access to it. I'm going to talk a little bit about the service ecosystem, which you have heard quite a bit about already this evening. So as we met with service providers, and we did meet with everyone here, as well as some others as well, we heard sometimes about some confusion around what organizations are best suited to serve individuals with specific characteristics or needs. So for example, if there is an older woman with no children who has a small dog and maybe is an amputee, what service provider would be the best fit for her to be able to get sheltered? Anecdotally, this sometimes can result in some back and forth with service referrals, which can unintentionally create barriers in accessing services for some individuals who may be turned away from a specific service because they're not able to accommodate that individual's specific needs. And we have two recommendations to help address this concern. In the short term, the city could help support the seamless approach to service referrals by providing some summary information about all of the service providers within your community. That would be general characteristics and contact information for the different providers in the area, help allow for some initial screening and assistance in finding the most optimal placement for that specific individual. In the long run, this is a function that is typically fulfilled by the coordinated entry system, which is a function of the Homeless Alliance. Again, the Homeless Alliance is just a couple of years old, and so that function hasn't yet been fully built out. But we do recommend that the city should be a partner in working with the Homeless Alliance to really build that strategy out and create that robust coordinated entry system where individuals are screened for eligibility of different services and then automatically prioritized based on their VSPDA, their vulnerability score, in order to make sure that we're providing services to those who most need the services and also providing that prioritization.
Tammy, if I could just interject, just for your knowledge, the Homeless Alliance is in the process of reworking the whole coordinated entry system. We're going through a transition phase right now, and so that's all in the work. So that work has started.
That's fantastic news. Absolutely. So you had anticipated what our results would be here this evening.
Yeah, okay.
So we're glad to hear that's working. We have some information and best practices on that within the report. The Alliance would like to see them. The next slide shows our service ecosystem gap analysis. And many of these things you have already heard quite a bit about, so I'll probably go over this at a high level. There are other things that have changed within your community and that are emerging as well, since we've started this work several months ago. But since 2020, the city has significantly increased the number of low-barrier shelter beds within the community. That is certainly something to celebrate. But again, there are still some of these key gaps, and that could potentially widen if the city is unable to continue to help provide services for homelessness within the community. But again, you do have a number of other partners to be able to work with and draw on for that, for these gaps to be addressed. The first area that you've heard quite a bit about is mental and behavioral health services. That is certainly a gap that was noted within our analysis, specifically for inpatient services. Generally speaking, these services tend to be provided by a county. We understand that there is some ongoing litigation between Marion County and the state around the availability of these mental health and behavioral health beds. And you've also heard about this need from your other providers here tonight. We also found that there are pretty limited shelter options for individuals who are unable to perform their activities of daily living. So if someone is incontinent or unable to feed themselves or perform any of those other activities of daily living, they're currently not eligible for most of the shelter offerings within the city. This is troubling, because these are individuals who are very particularly vulnerable, and they need that additional level of care. But if they aren't able to perform their activities of daily living inside of a shelter, they certainly aren't able to perform those activities of daily living outside of the shelter and living outdoors. And so that could create a dangerous situation where they are needing emergency services from the city as well. So really thinking through, there's minimal resources to be able to help support this group. We understand that there's a new permanent supportive housing unit that potentially could be able to help address that gap. But that's a key area that we did note throughout our analysis. We've already heard quite a bit about transitional housing. Of course, affordable housing and permanent supportive housing are additional needs that aren't listed here on the slide but are worth highlighting. Oftentimes, we'll see that if there's an insufficient number of affordable housing or permanent supportive housing units for individuals to go into, then it creates a backlog for the other services within your ecosystem. And that can create additional trauma for people who are trying to move through the service, the continuum of care. And it can also create a perception that those programs aren't working, but that's only because those individuals don't yet have a place to exit to. And then the last thing was the coordinated entry system, which we've already talked about. So the last area that we'll review this evening relates to the city's contracts. So essentially, there are two departments at the city that end up contracting for most of the homelessness-related services. And they've transitioned departments recently, so I will try to keep them straight this evening. So that's community planning and development and community services. So the city does use resources from the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing to help guide their contract management practices. But currently, we did note some inconsistencies in terms of how each department is issuing and managing these contracts. In some ways, there may continue to be differences, because the actual funding source for each of these grant opportunities is different. And so we do expect there to be some ongoing differences, in particular for your community development block grants, your home grants, coming out of community planning and development. I will get that at some point. But really, the key takeaway that we have within our report is that the city should be working together to establish consistent contract management processes and contract issuance processes, which would also help create a consistent experience for any providers that are receiving funding from the city through those different departments that are issuing those types of grants and contracts. We also have a recommendation to develop a suite of performance measures that could be included within the contract, again, just to help influence the overarching performance measurement framework for the city as a whole. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Counselor Rodeck.
Sure, thank you. And this might be both a question for Moss Adams and for our providers. I think it's really helpful for us all to understand the gaps in services and the emerging trends, and perhaps there's some overlap. Earlier tonight, we heard there's an increase in family homelessness. I also am hearing there's an increase in youth homelessness and senior homelessness. Meanwhile, when we turned to the Moss Adams presentation, we heard gaps in services include mental health, your top four were mental health, low-barrier shelters, transitional housing, and coordinated entry system improvements. I'm just wondering, how do these mesh? Can they be meshed? Because I'm trying to make sense of all the information tonight.
I can start with just stating that there's additional gaps noted within our report. And these were just the items that we wanted to be able to draw to council's attention this evening. So we do agree with the service providers. Certainly, they are the experts in this field. And we did note a lot of the same statewide trends around the homelessness trends within the state of Oregon, particularly for family homelessness. But we have identified where you are already doing things within that space. So for youth, we do have youth listed within our report as a gap, but you do have some shelter beds as well, and so we list that count within our report.
Any of the providers want to add to that?
I think the Moss Adams list of gaps are sort of very well-known to us and familiar to us. These are the things that, when people ask us, what are our hardest problems to solve, right? What do you not have resources to do? What do you not have the capacity or the ability to do? Those are all the things that have come forward. If you look at Oregon's history, the last five years, we've been primarily focused on solving unsheltered chronic homelessness, and we put a lot of resources in that. In fact, chronic homelessness in Oregon declined just a little bit in 2023. Traditionally, family services in particular have been more readily available, more easily accessible, and more effective in the short term. And that is the sense that problems could be solved fairly easily. So I think it's taken everybody a little bit by surprise, and it's all a reflection of the affordable housing crisis and the rental spikes and things of that nature. But I think, you know, these issues of youth homelessness and family homelessness are sort of a byproduct of the rent situation in Oregon getting out of control.
Counselor Stapleton.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to follow up on that. When I look at these four things that you've highlighted here, I really see how the city plays a role in the latter three. But how do we impact the first one? Mental and behavioral health, which is really provided by our county partners. How do we become partners in that in advocating on behalf of our communities? Because it's not just our unhoused who are struggling with this. Everybody is struggling with mental health, right? Especially when you look at Gen Z and some of the younger folks in our community. So how do we, and what would be plans, strategic plans, for us as a city to help impact that really important topic?
I can share some of the practices that we've seen other cities that we've worked with in this space take, from the less extreme to the most extreme. And so what we'll often see is that cities will engage its city council members to be able to do advocacy efforts with the county, as well as with the state, to be able to try to get additional access. I think that your Homeless Alliance is a great opportunity to be able to continue to try to advocate for those needs. And then in one case, we actually had a city that decided to develop their own behavioral health strategy and physical site to be able to provide the services for individuals within their community themselves, because they were nonplussed with the services that were being provided by the county. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Counselor Phillips.
I have a series of questions, but I'll just start with one. It's a follow-up of what was just talked about. I heard that a city somewhere else, not here, took it upon themselves to go into the field of providing services that are healthcare-related, mental health, behavioral health, that cities don't normally do, especially in the state of Oregon. How is that funded?
That city had a special tax passed to be able to help support homelessness specifically within its community.
Thank you for that. And was it in Oregon?
It was not. It was in California.
Okay. I don't know if this is still for Moss Adams, or if it's more for our panelists, or a combination of two. I mean, I think tonight, I've just blown away, you know, again, by the city staff who've been working on this for years, by the people on our panel tonight who've been in our community and tackling this head-on for years. And, you know, hearing that we're finally starting to move the needle on the, you know, the chronically unhoused, to see a little bit of a decrease between 2022 and 2023 in all measurements of homelessness in our community. You know, to me, as an immersive stream doctor, it feels like what we did with our ARPA funds and what we're doing through the coordinated care, you know, at so many levels, you know, by Mayor's Hoi, serving on the Homeless Alliance, the local, regional one, by all the work that we're doing, you know, we're seeing improvements. We're stabilizing this crisis, at least temporarily. But I'm just, you know, really worried about what comes next, because there was so much of this one-time funding that went into these projects. I'm glad to hear that we've got a little bit more time, you know, than the one-time funding through the federal government that we got to do a lot of these initiatives. But kind of walk me through, like, what does this transition period where we get off of that one-time funding look like? So this is probably redundant, but if we could just go over, like, the big things I'm tracking, or like, the various, like, hotel conversions through the Community Action Agency, you know, the Navigation Center, the Managed Micro Shelter Sites, like, how much funding do we have? Like, what's their, when are they good through? And then what does the next transition phase look like?
Thank you, counselor. I think I'm seeing a bunch of people that want to jump in on this. None of them, but maybe Gretchen will start.
Thank you. Counselor Phillips, Gretchen Bennett, homelessness lady is on City of Salem. I think the city's staff investments are being clarified and playing out, of course, with upcoming Budget Committee and future Revenue Task Force work. The Navigation Center, which is provided through a management agreement with the Mid-Blamette Community Action Agency, currently has funding through June 30th of 2025. The micro shelter programs- The micro shelter programs, the Turner Road micro shelter that serves 38 young adults aged 18 to 24, is supported for operations through June 30th of '25 with the governor's investments through the Homeless Alliance. And that is the same now for the Catholic Community Services site that serves families, children and families. There's now funding coming through, through June 30th of 2025, which is a brand-new development, by the way. So that's exciting. Village of Hope is the micro shelter that serves individual vulnerable adults over on Center Street. And that program is a question mark. The city currently has funded through June 30th of 2024. And as DJ mentioned in his presentation, there is a grant from the state and a proposal in the state legislature right now to see longer funding for Village of Hope. I might have missed something, counselor, that you were asking about. I didn't speak to the Arches Inn and Lodge, for example, so Jimmy might want to add on.
These projects are so expensive, we're not going to be able to finance them locally. Luckily, there is millions all around us. We just have to be very, very aggressive and intentional about going out and getting it. The state government is not going back to the situation that we had prior to 2020. They're going to continue to fund this work at a really elevated level compared to the past. You know, we will be attracting more HUD dollars into this region over time, and there's potentials for, you know, the Medicaid 1115 waiver to bring in a lot of resources into the community, but also for the CCOs generally, and then private investors to bring money into the community. Our agency just received a $5 million grant from the Jeff Bezos Foundation, the Day One Foundation for Family Homelessness. And, you know, we're going to start with all the unsheltered homeless families here in Salem, and I think we've got enough resources to solve most of that problem. But, you know, if you look at the Senate Bill 1530 that just passed through the committee and was sent to Ways and Means, there's $65 million there in additional sheltering funds. DJ's projects are on that list after we put in a lot of work this summer to make sure that that happened. So we're just going to have to take a very aggressive posture toward external resources and continue to bring them into the city. And I do think it's possible with that work to keep this level of work up long-term. But it's not going to be easy, and it's not going to be without sweating a few nights about wondering whether we're going to get the resources or not.
Did that answer your question, counselor?
I think it did, like, 10 out of 10. Like, it was really, really helpful. But I guess my next question, which is, you know, maybe more aspirational, but like, what can we do as council to help you all in your efforts to, you know, continue doing this incredible work that absolutely has to be done, but is work?
DJ, you want to give that a shot?
Well, I'm always into talking about the future. And again, I want to thank this council for risking one-time funds to start innovative processes that have paid off to the harm reduction and the thriving of hundreds of individuals. And so when people on this panel come to you, when you get one-time dollars and ask you to risk on projects that will then be picked up by the state, or by our CCO, or by federal dollars, I would ask you to continue to risk for those folks who can't do their ADLs, for vulnerable seniors in our community.
And then just a quick one, the acronym ADLs for the community members that don't know.
ADO?
ADLs.
Activities of daily living, basically being able to care for yourself without assistance. There is a sheltering model that we don't have in Salem that I think might be helpful. It has sort of kind of fallen off the radar for the last 15 years. It's called a safe haven model. You may have seen reference to it at various points in time. They're more typical in big cities like Washington DC and Seattle. And essentially, that is sort of a transitional living environment for folks with very high mental health acuties who just can't go to a place like a navigation center, or can't struggle with, you know, struggles with traditional shelters. But it's sort of a drop-in and stay for a little while, get a little bit stable, maybe go away for a few days and come back. We haven't tried that model with some of the extreme needs that we have here in Salem, but if we could ever get to a place where you could run that, I think that would be helpful.
We can't hear your conversation.
Prior to me joining Northwest Human Services, we ran a safe haven program. I can't necessarily speak to it, but I do understand it was a bit of a challenge.
It was, and many of them were unfunded, and sort of the HUD moved away from transitional housing around 2007, 2008 toward rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing.
Are there additional questions for any of our guests? Counselor Varney.
Thank you very much. My first question is for Tammy. You mentioned that you've done this with a number of other cities. I was curious about the recommendation to develop four to six performance measures to track out, track over time and communicate out. When you look at, I'm assuming that these other cities have done that, and looking what we do, does the data that we currently collect provide what's needed to track performance measures?
Yes and no. The data is collected. The city doesn't always own the data, meaning that some of the data would be housed within the homeless management information system to be able to pull that information out. So right now, you would be able to extract most of the data from the HMIS, as well as from your GIS system, where you're performing your individual tracking.
Okay, that's helpful. And then to kind of build on that, would you recommend that we develop our performance measures based on the data we currently have access to, or the other way around?
I would recommend that you work with the Homeless Alliance to be able to get access to the reports that will be meaningful to your community. Since you are an active partner in that agency, I think that they would be willing to be able to help you develop some reports. I cannot speak for them, but given the volume of information and the wealth of information that they have, it would also be a service for your service providers so that they're not having to track information separately in a different system as well to be able to report out on their outcomes for the city.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. My second question is for one of our wonderful community partners, perhaps. One thing I haven't heard about tonight that I'm just curious about is, what is the connection to employment? I mean, I haven't heard how individuals get connected to new employment. How does that process work?
Well, I can speak on our behalf. I can tell you that some of them that have come from micro shelter programs or Arches Inn are already employed by the time they come into permanent supportive housing, which is fantastic. But if they are not employed but are employable, many of our clients are coming through the doors with disability payments. But those who can, we can connect with workforce programs. And our number one goal is health and housing stability, making sure we don't traumatize by saying, "You need to walk through the door, get a job immediately." Those are really one of those mini-touch points that we continue to touch through building budgets, building goals, and how we achieve those goals. That's many of the case managements that work on our permanent supportive housing sites is something they communicate with the individuals.
I want to just mention here that, you know, having workforce and doing workforce development starts with creating that positive imagination for folks with barriers. So this is where I want to actually say Marion County has done an incredible job with their reentry program in getting hundreds of businesses to declare that they will be a second chance employer. And because of that, there's even temp agencies set up to work with folks with barriers, and they come on our micro shelter sites monthly to promote opportunities with those folks. So when we emphasize how we're going to build people's teams, it does start with healthcare, but then we move to the employability of those folks and what kind of skills they might want to develop, or they already have, to put to work in our community.
Okay, thank you. That's been really helpful.
Counselor Ordak.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about the connection to climate change and climate resilience. We've seen a lot of wildfire survivors come to Salem. They were staying at the Arches Inn. They were staying at Church in the Park. They were probably staying at a half a dozen other places that I wasn't personally made aware of. So that, to me, strikes me as a potential, not only does it create a sense of urgency, like, I saw a lot of community members who've never volunteered at a homeless shelter, volunteered because they wanted to help a wildfire survivor. So I'm also wondering, what kind of funding opportunities are there for building climate resilience into what we do? Because wildfires happen, heat domes happen, ice storms happen. We have a lot of temporary, short-term events that create a huge amount of need in a short amount of time. And then we have longer-term events, such as there are still folks without a home in the canyon. Years later, they still do not have a home. And so I see those as two overlapping groups of individuals, and I'm wondering, what can we do as a collection of partners to, perhaps there are certain pots of money available for housing these kinds of survivors that perhaps we were already pursuing, maybe there's more we can do. But I wanted to ask the question because climate change is not a temporary thing.
So the state just received $445 million in community development block grant/DR, which is disaster recovery, which will go into a lot of the wildfire-affected counties. Much of that will go toward infrastructure rebuild. Two years ago, we had a fund called WIRA, which was a resiliency fund for wildfire survivors. And we housed some of them at the Arches Inn. We eventually got them into rapid rehousing placements, and there are very few of those clients still on our radar today. I think there are probably still 50 or 60 unmet needs in the San Yum Canyon from folks there. But your larger point is correct. We're going to go through a series of just unexpected events that we should be planning for. Just think about the last three years, for example. In February 21, February, we had a really massive ice storm that knocked out power to many of your homes, knocked out power to my home for about a week. We had folks who died outside from that event. It was really traumatic. And then the summer, we had a heat dome event where the temperature in Salem reached 117 degrees. We had people who passed away from that. And as these extreme swings in weather continue, it's going to be really challenging for us to kind of stay in front of that and build resiliency around it. If you look at, you know, taking it out of Salem for a second, look at Portland, and you look at, you know, the long-term consequences of redlining in that city in which you have essentially, you know, food deserts, you have deserts in terms of trees and parks and things like that, where the surrounding temperature is three to five degrees higher than the rest of the city. I think one of the best things Salem has done is sort of committed to being a tree city so that we don't have those same kinds of consequences that some big cities do. But climate change will impact the poor the most. It will impact people in poverty the most, and it will certainly impact the homeless. Every time the river goes up, we have to do all kinds of crazy things to make sure to keep people safe. So working closely with the city, I think, is going to be critical in that regard long-term.
Mr. Staley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I've heard the county mentioned a couple of times this evening. So Tammy and Annie, what's your perception on how we're working with the county, and what are the opportunities there to improve that relationship going forward?
I would just clarify, counties.
Counties, yes. Thank you.
Because there's more than one.
Yes. I forget that.
We did not meet with the counties as part of our assessment, but we talked to individuals in the city, as well as your service providers, to better understand the role of the counties. And I think that there are certainly opportunities to be able to try to work with both the counties. I would suggest trying to do that through the Homeless Alliance, since both counties are involved in that work, and have that be the focal point for trying to get a lot of this regional approach to homelessness, understanding the city's differences in terms of how your needs, your services, your volumes look different than that within unincorporated Marion or Polk County. So I can't speak too much on the county relationship because we didn't meet with them as part of this work.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Counselor Gonzalez.
You know, I thank you for the report. I think long-term, the city does need a strategic plan, at least so we can set the vision for the city, just so we know what, you know, we can get the community involved and just have something that we can report back to all our partners and to the community, really. But Mr. Jones, you mentioned the apex is not yet here. What is it you're seeing that tells you it's not, and when do you expect it to peak? I mean...
So when I make that comment, you have to realize that almost every single person's first step into homelessness is a result of an economic condition. They may have lost a job, they may have lost a place to live, they may have been injured on the job, they may be a criminal conviction, a divorce, or something of that nature. And we have all these correlated conditions around homelessness, like mental health and drug abuse. But in terms of the broadest number of the population, almost every single one of them began their step into homelessness with some kind of economic instability. So until we get control of our affordable housing crisis in Oregon, until we can get rents that are affordable for working families in Salem and cities across Oregon, we're going to continue to see our number of homeless folks grow for the next 10 years.
Counselor Gwynn.
So, Mr. Jones, in talking about rent controls and rents, have there been any studies on manufactured home space rents? Because some of our, in Salem, I know of one park that's in the $500 to $600 range per month, but most of them are well over $1,000 a month just to rent the space, you know?
Thank you, counselor. I've done a lot of work on this particular subject because the manufactured home communities are sort of our last line of defense of affordable housing in town when we can't build fast enough. And what we've seen across the state and across the nation are a lot of these manufactured home communities being purchased by out-of-state investors, and then the rents being increased dramatically. Now, that becomes a captive population because it's usually anywhere from 800 to 1,000 or more, sometimes $4,000 or $5,000, depending, to even begin to consider to move a manufactured home from one location to the other. And some manufactured homes have been sitting in their spot for so long, they basically have rotted into the ground, so they're not movable, especially in some of our rural communities. So, you know, this is an area that there's been a lot of talk at the state legislature about more heavily regulating. But I'm so concerned about it that I've considered sort of investing and purchasing some locally ourselves because, yeah, because frankly, it's just, you know, it's going to be one of the few places that our retiree community in particular may be able to afford to live if these rent prices continue to increase.
Thank you for raising that issue, counselor. It's a really important one. Counselor Gonzalez.
Just want to follow up with that, because then also on the horizon, and we haven't seen it here, but it's the hedge funds that are really pumping, really setting up large accounts, large funds to just buy single-family homes and sort of do the same thing. So that's a concern of mine, too.
Thank you, counselor. That's happening with every type of housing. So, single-family homes, apartment complexes, manufactured home communities, a lot of those are being gobbled up by hedge funds, out-of-state big conglomerate investors, and then the rents raised dramatically higher, or pooled into a larger pool of investments, which still leads to the rents going up. So, you know, this is not something that's just peculiar to Oregon. It's happening across the country, but it is definitely very concerning.
Thank you for that. Since we're talking a little bit about rent control, and I know we've talked about it only really at the state level in Oregon mostly, I would just be interested in your take, maybe Nicole, or Jimmy, or any of our panelists. What's your take on the possibility of city-by-city rent control? Do you think that's an effective approach, or should we focus more on statewide? Oh, actually, our city attorney wants to weigh in first.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan Ashison, city attorney. This is a question that we've talked about at council previously, and we can bring some of those answers back to give you a more comprehensive response. But specifically manufactured home parks, there is state legislation that prohibits us from making much headway into controlling the ownership or the rents, as well as rent control at a city level. But we can provide more comprehensive legal response to that.
Thank you.
There is a lot of questions around what rent control laws do to landlord behavior in terms of, you know, there are some folks who say that, you know, that the landlord community wasn't even dialed in to annual increases until they realized that there were going to be maximum caps. And so it's sort of, in the minds of some, created an incentive to raise to the maximum. And we have seen that across the state. I still think it's largely market forces that are driving those things, but there's a lot of interesting research beginning to emerge around this.
And I'd have to agree, but I also want to say that we have seen a lot of movement from big commercial developers into Salem that are leaving the Portland market. Many of them are selling off even their Portland developments and moving into this, which is also bringing that influx of heavy rents down to the Salem area.
is also bringing that influx of heavy rents down to the Salem area. So keeping that in mind, we're very, that data, we're watching very closely as that trend continues to rise.
Thank you.
I think I saw another hand somewhere. Councilor Nishioke?
Thank you, Mayor Hoy. So on this theme, I have a couple of questions, but I will go with this theme. As a city, can we do much about these larger hedge funds or groups coming in that are buying? Is there something that we're able to do?
Counselor, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
One other question. This is getting back to funding, and this I'm going to ask Stephen. You spoke about the federal grant that you received so that you could provide medical care, mental health care. And how long do you anticipate that federal grant to last? And do you anticipate further grants coming forward? Because it still gets down to this question, and even DJ talked about this, you know, like have the faith to move forward and do something, but then there is always that fear that we will not be able to continue. So I'm kind of wondering where you are with Northwest Services.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I should mention that the grant that we receive is very, very small. I mean, it essentially pays for several FTEs and for that bus run, medical bus run program that I mentioned. The rest of our services are funded by a variety of different types of funding, both private, state, and federal. In terms of the sustainability of that, it's hard to tell. We're unique in that we're sort of a hybrid. The money that we generate through our care services, our medical services, we put, we invest right back into our programs. That's a bit unique for other nonprofit programs doing this work. And so that's enough for us to continue to do our work moving forward. But we are always, like others here, is looking for continued sustainable funding to help support not just what we're doing now, but what we anticipate is continued growth in need.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, and thanks for changing the subject. Not because I want to, but because I am curious. The number of the 4,549 number, is that, are all of those people, what's the word, coordinated entry, are they all named, and we know what their condition is, whatever it is, financial or physical or...
So when anyone enters into coordinated entry, two things happen. The first is we get around 50 pieces of demographic information. So we get their name, social security number, you know, all the standard demographic information. The other part, the other 50 pieces of data, essentially a vulnerability assessment. And that's only given to people who are literally homeless, unless it's a special circumstance for, you know, certain special funds. But that vulnerability assessment looks at domains, it could be, you know, their health, it could be socialization, it could be whether or not they're being preyed upon outside, how long they've been homelessness, how long they've been in a condition of homelessness. So we do know every name on that list. We do know a great deal of information about them. So over the course of time, in the last seven years, we, along with our partners at this table and others, have assessed probably more than 10,000 households in Marion and Polk, and probably more than 15,000 total people in that list. So we have probably the richest data source on the economic conditions in particular and the disabling conditions in particular that surround homelessness in Oregon in some ways. So, yeah, that's all known.
And is there a certain amount of population that is not counted that's here? Are there people here that are not in that system?
Of those 4,000 people, all of them are in that system. There are people outside that are not in that 4,000, whatever the number was. There are folks who, for whatever reason, have declined the opportunity to be assessed, who have refused it in certain cases because, you know, they don't want to give their information to the government or whatever. That's increasingly fewer and fewer, however, because what the Alliance has done very well is that it has built out its HMIS system to where, no matter where you go in the continuum, you're getting a scan into HMIS. So if you go to the Archers Day Center just to pick up your mail, you're getting scanned. Your badge is getting scanned. If you're taking a shower, you're getting scanned. If you go see DJ for a bed, you're getting scanned into the system. So there are fewer and fewer individuals out there that are just totally off the grid. Now, that's most true of the downtown core. And the farther we go out from that core, it's less true. So one area that I think the nonprofit community needs to do better work is in East Salem, right? Lancaster in particular, Northeast Salem. And if you were to go just down the street over there, I think you would find a higher number of individuals who were not in coordinated entry in some way, shape, or form. But in the core, basically, everybody's in the system.
If I may just tap onto that, I would add, I think we're also increasingly hungry for more assessors at more assessment sites out in the field. I hear regularly of people who are open to doing an assessment, but we can't get it at the particular time. And readiness is such an important part of this for a person. So, for example, I'm grateful the Homeless Alliance recently said that the Salem Housing Authority's special team is going to be able to be trained to do field-based assessments, and we're really looking forward to that additional capacity.
So if you think about the cost of all that, right? You know, if you have 30 people who are doing assessments and you're paying them a salary, now that may not be their primary part of their job, but it's a piece of their job. So coordinated entry has become a very expensive exercise across the country. Our agency shouldered the largest part of that burden for the first five years of the work, but it's gotten so large and the demand is so great for more, we really reached a point where we had to ask for additional assistance from our partners to provide more assessments.
So that's where that kind of reworking of that whole system is coming in, where we're going to be kind of, just kind of reimagining the whole process here in Marion Polk through the Homeless Alliance. Also, I just wanted to mention, too, that the Alliance is getting ready to launch our new strategic planning effort, I think, April 5th. We've already engaged with a new, with a consultant to help us with our latest strategic plan, so that work's going to be starting as well. Yeah.
I think that this unmonitored population is heavy on my mind because I'm in Northeast Salem, and I deal with that a lot. So just because people ask me, do we have any idea how many people aren't accounted for and in Salem?
It's very difficult to prove a negative in that case, and the most honest and direct answer to that is no. We do do a lot of street outreach in that particular part of town now compared to what it was four or five years ago, so it is improving. But we still, there still needs to be a lot of work done, I think, in the Northeast in particular.
Jimmy, have we ever looked at the data that we get in the pit count and compared it to the HMIS? Because sometimes people might be willing to respond to a pit count because it's a much less onerous kind of set of information. Have we ever looked at that to see if we could make a, draw any sort of conclusion?
We have, Mayor. The problem with the pit count information is that it never gets anybody's name and social security number. So deduplicating things is very difficult. Being able to identify anything with great confidence can be very difficult. So it's never been the case that we could sort of compare apples to apples in that kind of situation and get an accurate count of what's uncovered in one part of town. Once upon a time, deep in the past, when I was mostly running the HMIS system for the community myself, before I took my current job, we had sort of set up data fields within the assessment to get information about what county people were from, where they were primarily from, what part of the city that they were primarily from. But as that process has evolved over time, that information has kind of fallen off. So it's actually more difficult now to UCE than it was five years ago to kind of figure out who's coming from where.
Yeah.
I have a person in my life who deals with addiction and seven, eight years of homelessness. And one of the things that we hear is, well, he was ready to go, but there was nobody to answer the phone. Or he had to wait till two weeks from now to get that kind of help. What's a short answer for how do we make that better?
We need more resources to make the intake process more smooth. So at the Archers Day Center, for example, we get a phone call every seven seconds. Every seven seconds, that's what we average. So that's everybody in the community needing some kind of help, one way or the other. Sometimes it's just people checking to where they are on the list. Sometimes it's because they need rental assistance and they don't know where to go. You know, and what I would love to have is a phone bank of maybe 10 people who just answered the phones and sort of navigated that need. But that's the sort of problem you're having at agencies, state departments, and everywhere right now. It's just almost impossible to get through because there are so many people in need, and there's so few resources in terms of the folks that are there to kind of navigate folks to where they need to go.
Yeah.
Because it's a hot topic right now, and I know it's not all set up, but if Measure 110 were to change, and we had some form of recriminalization and a place for people to go, how would that impact the numbers for you guys?
So if, let's just say that Measure 110 was repealed tomorrow, and what difference would it make in the most immediate sense? And the answer to that is none. If you look at other states with opioid problems, in particular synthetic opioids, you know, our death rates, if you followed the article in the Oregonian earlier this week, have spiked faster than any place in the United States. But that still only parks us right in the middle of about 30 people dying per 100,000 from opioid, primarily 70% fentanyl overdoses, right in the middle of the rest of the country. And if you look at other states like West Virginia, which has about 75 per 100,000, Kentucky, Tennessee, former areas in Appalachia, you look at South Carolina, all these places with really tough drug laws, really tough drug laws, and yet it really hasn't made much of a difference in terms of the overdoses that are taking place. I do think there are times that all the providers get frustrated that, you know, we can't, if people are misbehaving, it's harder to kind of get them redirected sometimes than it was before. But if you're looking for, you know, sort of any immediate impact from recriminalization, it's probably not going to have a whole lot. Our fentanyl crisis is largely caused by the migration of that drug into our community when it was almost absent from it two and three years ago. If you looked at Oregon's opioid desk in 2019, it was among the lowest in the country. And so all that East Coast drug, all of that drug from Southern California, and a lot of it now being imported out of China, coming into the United States has just devastated Oregon. This is the chart on the, oh, I probably can't see it with the camera. This is on the Oregon Health Authority website. It's called the Domasal Unknown Death Reporting Statistic Page. And we had an increase of 99 folks who died outside in Oregon from 2022 to 2023. 637 last year, 538 the year before. And if you look at Marion Polk, we had 50 deaths here and only 45 the year before. So our deaths are lower than Eugene. They're only a handful more than what we see in Jackson County, which is a much smaller location than Marion Polk. And the major growth has actually been, obviously, in Multnomah County. So we're doing a pretty good job here. I do think that, you know, there are times that I get frustrated, DJ gets frustrated, we all get frustrated. But, you know, the recriminalization or decriminalization of it generally does not have a whole lot of impact on the addiction rate in the community, in my experience. DJ, you want to?
You covered a lot there. And what I want to say is that the providers that are up here are also saving lives, if not on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, with how well-trained the staff are to provide interventions like Narcan. And then that is often a wake-up call to those folks to seek behavioral health and drug and alcohol counseling. And so there are good news stories coming out of, again, people being present to intervene in appropriate ways.
Just in follow-up, death from all of this is a horrible thing. And I don't know if maybe the chief wants to speak to this, but would it? He and I have had conversations about folks not having that moment, that timeout, where you broke a law, you're going to go and sit for, you know, three days or two weeks, or I don't know what it is. But it gives you enough to go, okay, I don't want to do this again. I don't know if Chief Womack wants to talk to that or not, or...
Mayor, Counselors, thank you. Trevor Womack, Chief of Police. I don't have a lot to say on this issue, actually. I think what you're touching on is a concern for law enforcement, that in certain situations, a small tool that we once had to interrupt a cycle was taken away without another successful process or system in place. That's the real issue. You take a tool away for a system that's been built over decades, and you eliminate it overnight without an alternative in place. I think that's the real issue here. I think the reform measures that are being discussed now will put us back in a place where maybe we have some of those tools back in the right way. It was always about deflection and diversion. You know, minor possession of drugs was never about sending people away for, in prison for years. It was always about interrupting a cycle, trying to get them into some sort of drug court or diversion program like Lead in Marion County, where you can keep people out of incarceration and into services. So that tool that was set up that way was kind of removed from us when we decriminalized the drug. We couldn't really use that system anymore to interrupt the cycle. So it was just about a matter of the tools that we had from the criminal justice system, when we get called into situations where it's trespassing or loitering or these minor quality of life issues that are happening, and the person happened to be suffering from addiction and have a small amount of drugs that were criminalized, you could interrupt that cycle. And you can at least get the person plugged into some sort of diversionary effort to get services. And we've seen success from that, too. You can't say that there, there's many hundreds of, hundreds of people that have removed themselves from addiction because of that process. And so it does work in certain situations. And so I think that's, from my perspective speaking, just from the Chief of Police with 32 years of experience, that's the piece that was frustrating for me, is just that removal of the tool that, when we used it in the right way as intended, could be effective in certain situations.
Thanks, Chief. Counselor Varney, I think you had your hand up, and then I'll get to Counselor Nordike.
Okay, thank you. Backtracking a little bit, my question was about the point-in-time count. I'm curious as to the number for 2023, is that observed individuals, or is it expanded at all? That's one question. And then the other one is, is there any work being done so that the pit count could be a statistically valid census or survey so that it could be crosswalked with the HMIS system?
So the pit count numbers are surveyed individuals. That is, when we go out to do a pit count, we have this sheet. We ask folks these questions. That's one survey, and that's how that number gets generated. And if they have multiple people in their household, we'll put that on the list as well. The pit count forms usually just get the first letter of the first name and the first three letters of the last name. Did I get that right? Thank you. So it's been always impossible to sort of correlate that data with coordinated entry So those numbers are complicated depending on where the survey's being conducted. So in the downtown part of Salem, for example, we get, I think, 90 to 95% of the people who are on the street. They either come into Stephen's shop, they're at DJ's, they're somewhere in our system, and we get most of those. The farther we get out from the core, the more complicated it gets. So good pit counts usually take place in sort of dense areas of urban environments. They're just sort of designed for that purpose. Now, to go out to the San Yum Canyon and try to do a pit count out there where you're, you know, trudging up some forest road, or, you know, you're out in Fall City and you're trying to figure something out out there, the quality of the pit count collapses in those rural environments. So they were never really designed for that purpose. So there's a lot of work that goes into trying to make these the best possible tools that they can be, but the nature of what we're trying to do in that moment is exceptionally difficult, if not impossible.
I'm going to go to Counselor Nordike and then to Counselor Phillips.
Thank you. First, more generally, is HMIS usage widespread and consistent across providers in Salem?
I can speak to that from the Alliance perspective. It was initially, when we created the Alliance, it was very low usage. And we, as, we took a policy at the Homeless Alliance that said, basically, if you're going to work with us, you have to enroll in HMIS. And that's, I think it was, we were, Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was about 20% usage when we started that policy, and now I think it's close to 90%, if I'm not mistaken. So just in the past, like, three years, we've dramatically increased that usage, but it is fairly new to our community. Microphone bleeding, there you go.
And the part that I would add to that is that the consistency of use is now almost universal across the community. The quality of the data being entered still needs a lot of work because people have to be trained how to enter that correctly, they have to be trained how to give the assessment correctly. And when you're dealing with dozens of providers, sometimes there's a, it's very difficult to train to a common standard in that environment. So we've seen some inconsistencies of data entry in various projects. They are getting better. But again, as the mayor said, it's still a fairly young... projects. They are getting better. But again, as the mayor said, it's still a fairly young young effort.
Okay, a couple follow-ups. Oh, I'm sorry, please.
No, I just wanted to add as well, and maybe acting in capacity, Deputy Chief Aguilar can also, we, as the Housing Authority, we do our best to try to track the HMIS for our law enforcement partners that we collaborate with out there in the field. That is an area where we're obviously not with them all the time. But we, when the team is out there, they are trying to enter those times that they are out there making that contact. That is an area that I can't tell you the countless amount of times that our law enforcement officers are making contact with homeless individuals that could also be acquiring that information. So I just didn't want to negate that there is that other party, our fire, our police, and public works that are out there in the field that are making contact, but they are not HMIS users. And the Housing Authority's team of three does their best to keep up with as much entering of that information as possible.
Thank you. That is helpful, because that was going to be my follow-up. Is there anyone not using HMIS who should be in our city right now?
Yes, we have certain projects and providers that have not fully incorporated the system into their work. I think the biggest example is the Men's Shelter Union Gospel Mission, which is really important for the community to get that information in HMIS long term. I think, you know, from their perspective, they've got concerns about how that information would be used in terms of their clients. And that's that's another difficult part of all this. We have, you know, we have a sort of government structure with the Alliance, but we have nonprofit providers who are, you know, sort of also trying to do the work in alignment with their own values, their own mission, their own board's direction and perspectives. And not all of that is in alignment sometimes. And but we have worked for for some time to try to get those beds into HMIS, and I hope one day that they'll be there.
Okay. The next question I had is goes back to housing. I, we had a South Salem Town Hall last year where we really talked up a lot about the affordability of RV parks, manufactured home parks, and so on. So it's very top of mind for several members of council. When I think about all the different projects that we've collaborated on just within the last few years, we've helped create safe parking, micro shelters, we've converted hotels, we've converted homes, we've converted apartment buildings, we've done, we're creating cottage clusters with United Way. I mean, there's so many different types of housing opportunities that have been created. And I think that's one of our biggest success stories as a communities. I also know that Gretchen Bennett was calling up all kinds of landlords, going around doing the circuit, like, hey, I see you got a vacant warehouse, you haven't had a tenant in in like 10 years, would you consider leasing it to us for a shelter? And we were told no so many times. Heartbreaking. I toured a couple of those. I got told no. I don't like that. That doesn't happen too often.
The city should be very proud of what, this council should be very proud of all the projects that it has implemented the last few years. When the governor goes around across the state and talks about examples of how the work is working the way it should be working, and things are going well, she frequently uses Salem as an example for how, you know, people are figuring it out. And that can be hard, I think, for our residents sometimes, when they still are sort of getting very frustrated with what they see on the street. And, you know, especially, you know, the drug issue is very, very difficult, I think, sometimes to communicate. But there is a tremendous amount of good work that's gone on in this community. And I'm very thankful for the leadership we have here with this body of people who have who have made made it possible for for the folks at this table to to help people and to save so many lives that would have been lost otherwise.
Right. And I don't want to rest on our laurels. I think it's important we acknowledge what we've done. But, you know, moving forward, what are the next projects on the horizon that we should be looking at? Where should we be investing more in shelters? Should we be investing more in permanent supportive housing? I, please don't say all of the above, because I think that's probably the most accurate answer. But the city doesn't have unlimited amount of money to spend on housing and shelter, whether it's transitional, permanent, et cetera, mental health beds, et cetera. I mean, if you have a limited capacity for us to add more housing, whether it's RV parks, et cetera, I mean, where are some areas where we should strategically be focusing our next projects on? I would love to hear folks' thoughts on that.
I can barely keep Nicole away from the microphone. She has a lot of ideas. But I would say, if you want to keep a focus on affordability, then aggressively partner with nonprofits where you can build in the agreements around the affordable RV parks, manufactured homes, affordable housing from the beginning, rather than thinking it's just magically going to happen at market rate.
And I'm only going to touch on the RV parks. Often come to my attention, probably after many of your meetings. My common answer to that is the Housing Authority provides decent, safe, and affordable housing. And unfortunately, a lot of those RVs out there, we wouldn't consider as sanitary living conditions, nor can we provide federal assistance to help offset the cost of running those facilities. And by golly, if we found that much land, we would want to be building an apartment complex for permanent supportive or affordable housing. Also, our number one goal is to find those developers out there that can build units much faster than us and partner with them, even just 20 units, 40 units, whatever. Many people don't realize that the Housing Authority has partnered on over 1,000 affordable units. That is a partnership with those private developers to provide that service to our Salem community, but we don't necessarily own or manage those units. And that's that's invaluable for us to continue to provide affordable housing with our vouchers program and keeping those rent reasonable programs going throughout the community. And those are all over the Salem area.
Thank you for your responses. I'm going to get to Counselor Phillips, because he's been very patiently waiting.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy and the panelists. I, I think it was good to wait, though. I just wanted to weigh in, and not just a counselor in this in this community, I'm an emergency room doctor. And it's just, it's really tough to, you know, see, you know, what's happening in terms of, you know, the drug problems and the fentanyl crisis that's sweeping our nation. I just, I don't know how to break this down in a way that, like, moves hearts and minds. I frankly don't expect that anything I'm going to say is going to change anybody's perspective. Those things are probably locked in. I know that the state did move to decriminal drug, decriminalize drugs by a vote of 58% of voters a couple of years ago, and that coincided with the the movement of fentanyl into this area. I don't think there's any data to show that Measure 110 has any statistical impact on what we're seeing. It's just the presence of this substance that is bonkers. You know, morphine is a common pain medicine that we use in the in the in the emergency room. Two milligrams of morphine is a small dose. That amount of fentanyl would kill multiple people. I mean, fentanyl is measured in micrograms, like one thousandths of a milligram. It takes so little to just devastate someone. And the ability to have quality control is just impossible. So it is a unique substance. I don't think that full criminalization is going to do anything. I, the science, I've never seen anything that is going to change things. But as a doctor, if I were to reimagine this, I would love to have some version of compulsory or mandatory, like, detox and drug treatment. You know, short term is somewhat beneficial, moderate to long term makes a huge difference. So I know that things are probably going to change, maybe not in a way that I like, but I hope that there's moderation in this process and that the ultimate goal is to save lives and to get as many people help that they need. I remember asking a year ago, maybe two, two years ago during the budgeting process, like, are our police and fire using fentanyl? And then the next several months, I've lost track of how many lives we've been seeing saved by either the managed micro shelter sites having access to Narcan, our police having access to Narcan, or fire having access to Narcan. You know, things like that reversal agent, naloxone, also called Narcan, that has saved lives. And getting that out into the community has made a tremendous difference. So I just, there's no magic answers, you know. Deleting Measure 110 will not fix this problem, based on science, which is just objectively true. I get that people are angry. It's a devastating substance, and I don't know how to put the genie back in the bottle.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any last questions? Because I know that we had committed to being out of here by eight, but we want to get all the questions answered as well. Counselor Quinn.
I just have one question, and it's about the Navigation Center. I was just curious if we currently have the police beds available at the Navigation Center.
I just signed the MOU yesterday, so those should be available immediately.
Is that with the sheriff's office as well, or just is that strictly the PD?
City of Salem.
Okay. Where are we at with the sheriff's office?
We're waiting on a response.
Okay. All right. Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you. This is, again, I want to thank all of you for being here, all of the work that you do. Fabulous. And if it wasn't for you, the city wouldn't look so good. So thank you very much. My question is more about if there is anything that we should consider doing that might prevent those on the edge of homelessness to help them financially so they don't fall into homelessness where we then have to support their needs. And I'm thinking in terms of oftentimes I'll hear that somebody has very high medical bills that they can't pay, and then all of a sudden, they now don't have an ability to then rent because they don't have enough money on with what they earn. So I'm wondering if there's any mechanisms that have been out there that might provide some short-term funding and a program that someone could go to for those type of situations.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this. Thank you for your question. This would have been on my wish list to Counselor Nordeig's question on ways, the projects on the horizon, things that we can invest in. I mentioned in my opening remarks around our emergency financial assistance program. So we're just one of a handful of a network of financial assistance providers within this community that are keeping people in their homes. These are households that are calling, one flat tire, one lost paycheck, reduced hours for a medical issue or condition, and they're just hanging on. And they're reaching out for help. The amount of calls we're getting in our emergency, in our financial assistance program, we can't staff it up enough to meet the need. We are taking in, the first week of every month, this is just our program, over 100 calls a day from various programs or various wards across the state. In fact, I can tell you how many households in each in each of your wards is calling that is that is on the edge. Even more concerning is when we when we ask other issues in terms of their health and how they, their financial situation's impacting them, 22% of those calling for emergency financial assistance are suffering from suicidal ideation. So we're doing risk assessments and safety plans. 22% of these individuals. And our denial rate is close to 80% because we run out of funds. And so to your question, yeah, I mean, one of the the best ways of of helping address homelessness is keeping people in their homes. All of the network, I'm going to speak for everybody, doing this work is very important work. They need additional funding and resources, not just the funding to distribute to the community, but also to expand their staffing to actually answer the call and provide that assistance.
Thank you, Stephen. Oh, I was just going to say, I think that's a wonderful wrap-up. But now I'm seeing hands.
Just one point.
Yeah.
I would just like to peg that for the city manager. When we get our revenue situation sorted out, when we come together as a community and choose a path forward to adequately fund the programs that we want to fund, and I know our community, and I know homelessness and services for folks who are struggling are going to be on that list, I would like to find some way to help with that situation that we just talked about.
And I just want to add, I want to thank the city for, sorry, for supporting our program. Again, the general funds, year after year, the city came and stepped up, and we were able to help a good, a good amount of households in the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn.
I just wanted to ask, if a report such as that is available, would you be willing to provide it? Because I think it would be very telling and awesome information for us to have.
Absolutely. I can, any any data that you need on any of the things that's was mentioned today, I can provide to you.
And I know you're trying to wrap it up, but I just want to highlight that he said the adequate ability to staff these programs up. We often get funding, but we can't adequately staff, and it's creating burnout situations in probably all of our different angles that we work to create this, is that a lot of this funding isn't adequately coming to staff the programs that we need.
Thank you. I think this was a really great conversation. I really appreciate all of our guests being here and helping us. I think this, thank you, Gretchen, for putting this all together. I think that it answered all of the issues that we had raised back a few months ago when we asked for this work session. So I appreciate the conversation. Gives us a lot to consider, and I'm hoping that the community was paying attention, because it's really important information. So thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.